Welcome to the October 24, 2017 Board of Education meeting. We have five board members present, two absent. And the board has been in closed session since 7:15 for approval of September 26 and October 10, 2017 closed session minutes. Could we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is public comments. Are there public comments for tonight? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to presentations. Health and dental insurance presentation.
Our new broker from Alliant, Renee Formel. She could, she has, she was at an open enrollment meeting in Nevada, could not make it back in time. So I'll just talk briefly about our renewal, which is for the calendar year 2018. We had a really good year from a claims perspective. When Blue Cross Blue Shields underwriters did the renewal for the PPO plan, they used trend of 7.7% for medical and 10.1% for prescription drugs. And still, it came out with a 1.6% decrease for the PPO plan. And the HMO plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield used an 8.2% trend for medical and 11.3% for prescription drugs. And that resulted with our claims, good claim year, the, a reduction of 0.87% on our HMO plans. Then our, our insurance committee met and we, we proactively were trying to modernize the PPO 1 plan, which is a very high costly, high premium plan that we, that we have. And so we, what Renee did is put a à la carte menu of, of different plan design changes and what percentage each plan design change would have. And the insurance committee reviewed all of the different concepts and came up with, with a plan to make changes. Dave, if you'll move down. The first change was to increase the deductible on the PPO 1 plan from a $400 deductible to 600. The second one is to put a, a $150 copay for emergency room usage. And then the third one was to change from a $10 generic, a $25 brand formula and a $50 brand non-formula prescription drug to 15, 30, 50. And then the fourth change, since the PPO 1 plan was grandfathered and now is not grandfathered, so then it, that results in the mandatory ACA preventive care enhancement to our plan. So that's actually an improvement to the benefits is that fourth part. And so as a result of these changes, it would make the PPO 1 plan a reduction of 2.82% as opposed to the 1.6. So Dave, if you go to the last slide, this was the, the staff, the staff voting was 67.24% for the, the benefit plan changes and 32.76% against. So, so, so that passed. And so the reduction for the PPO 1 is a 2.82%. The, the insurance committee worked really well together. It was, they were very, very engaged and working committee, had the, you know, best intent and, and to, to modernize the plan to try and avoid the Cadillac tax in the future to make, to implement these, these plan changes. So it was a very positive, and I want to, the insurance committee, there are 12 voting members in the insurance committee, which is four teachers, one custodial and maintenance, one PSRP member, and then there are four administrators appointed by the superintendent, and then the benefits coordinator and myself. So there are 12 voting members on the insurance committee. But then we also have informational members of the committee so that they can report back to their buildings about what's going on with, with our insurance benefits. And it was a very positive, great working relationship. The, the president of the teachers' union, Max Schoenberg, did a great job. And they all went out and spread the word about the plan changes and it really, it really worked. We all worked really well together. So it was a, a good, a good experience, good, good for the committee. So that's it on the insurance renewal.
Do you have one? Go ahead. Then I have one.
Chris, I just wanted you to clarify with the ACA. So how does that impact us?
So, can you move up? Down a little bit. So, go down a little bit. are just preventive care like ham grams and regular checkups and so forth. So prior to this, the in-network preventive care, in our current plan, it's a 100% for the first $100 and then 90% after that. So in the new change-
Hold your hand.
Sorry. So, so what our plan was, was 100% for the first $100, 90% after that. In the new, the new changed plan under the Affordable Care Act, all of the preventive care is covered at 100%.
Is that what you meant by the, it was the fourth line?
Yes.
I think it was, it says 100% of our in-network coinsurance.
So it's, the preventive care is 100% covered under the Affordable Care Act. That was worth like a half a percentage point in the increasing benefits related to that.
So we are, we are moving toward, I know this was an objective of the insurance committee, is to help educate all of our employees that we really don't want to be hit with the Affordable Care Act and we don't want to be spending money, just giving money to the government versus adjusting our insurance so that it's, the money stays here.
We did. And the insurance committee-
So thank you.
Yeah, the insurance committee did a great job of going back and explaining that to each of them representing the buildings and going back and communicating that message back. And it did result in the, the staff voting for the, the plan changes.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Chris. Are you doing the next presentation?
I am.
Yes, tax levy presentation.
So this is the estimated tax levy 2017. So the, thanks. So the timeline on this, CPI was approved in January of 2017 at 2.1%. Tonight, before you, we have the proposed estimated tentative levy. And then at the December 12 meeting, we will have the, the public hearing at 7:30. And then the board would approve that 2017 tax levy at the December 12 meeting. Then I, go file it at the counties, the levy. And then in around spring break, the final EAVs, late March, early April, we get the final EAVs and extensions from the county. And then the first half of the tax, taxes are in June and then the second half are in September. As I said, this, the CPI for this tax levy is a 2.1, which is a little bit higher than it's been in the last five years. It's averaged 1.36 over the past five years where we've had, we had four years in a row under 2%. Historically, I think it's averaged about 2, 2.1%. So this is about average over the past 20, 24 years or so, but this is, but it had been low in the previous four years. This just shows the, under the tax cap, when EAV is rising, the tax rate goes down. And when EAV is going down, the tax rate goes up. So we were in the, from 2008 to 2014 where the EAV was going down and the tax rate was going up. Now we're into, we're back to where EAV is going up and the tax rates are going down. This shows that inverse relationship between EAV and tax rate. But so the, so sometimes it gets confused when, you know, the tax rate goes down, people think their tax bills go down. But that's not the way the tax cap formula works. The tax bills or the tax extension is, is the EAV times the tax rate. Determining the tax levy, we have the CPI at 2.1, but we don't know, we don't know what EAV and new construction are. We've estimated EAV at a 7% increase. York Township, it looks like it's going to be a 6.15% increase at York Township and 8.31% increase in Addison Township. So that's, so we're at a set, so we've estimated a 7% increase in EAV. That doesn't really impact how much money, how much property taxes the school district gets. That really just figures more, the EAV increase just figures into tax rates. New construction, so we've had new construction, 2012 was about 20 million, then 21 million, 33 million, 35 million, 38 million in new construction EAV. So in this levy, we had, I estimated it at 42 million. It's just an estimate. I don't have those numbers yet. That's just an estimate. We, for the tax levy purposes, in case of underestimating the new construction, put in another 25 million. So 67 million was used in order to come up with the tax levy amounts, which are here, which results in a 4.9% increase for the operating or the tax cap funds, the operating funds, 4.58 overall. But if EAV, new construction comes in at the 42 million, it would actually come out to 38.83% for the, for the operating funds and 3.75% for the overall increase. That's it on the tax levy.
Any comments from board members? Jim?
Chris, just to clarify, if we do see a $42 million increase in new construction, average homeowner is not going to see a 3.8% increase in their bill.
That's right.
Somebody that has not built a new home, stayed in the home that they were in, hasn't put it on in addition, is going to see something much closer to a 2.1% increase-
That's correct.
-in the school district.
That is correct. A 2.1% for existing EAV with no new construction.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have two sets of board meeting minutes. Are there any changes or modifications for September 26 or October 10, 2017 minutes? Okay, hearing none, those will stand. Superintendent's consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. Who wants to do a motion?
I'll do it. I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Jim, seconded by Margaret. But it, wait, I didn't ask if any board member wants to remove an item. No, sorry about that. No removal. Okay, then we'll do the roll call vote. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
It's five i's, no nays, two absents. That motion passes. Superintendent's action items.
Okay, the first one, it, excuse me. The first one is based on the levy presentation that you just heard, request to approve the tentative levy as presented by Chris. So we would just need a motion and it's, it's exactly what you just heard.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution regarding the estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the year 2017 and the notice of proposed tax increase for publication in the Elmhurst suburban life.
Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by Kara. Any discussion about the public or the levy? We'll have a public meeting next time. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. It's five i's, no nays, two absents. That motion carries.
Next is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, so this, the recommendation is that the board approve the collective bargaining agreement. The PSRP union ratified this on October 18, 2017, and we would ask that you do the same tonight.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. I move that the board approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and the Elmhurst Professional and School Related Personnel Council Local 571.
Okay. I second. Okay, moved by Jim, seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Dave, could you or Chris explain some of the, just the high points in this, in this agreement?
I'll probably defer to Jim for specifics, but basically, the agreement, as we looked at our comparator districts, we were able to bring our employees much more into line with our comparator districts. In some cases, the pay was lower, and so we made a concerted effort to try to bring that to where we thought was appropriate. And I can let Jim explain that in the greater detail if, if you feel that's necessary.
I don't feel it's necessary, but if you- As the board obviously knows, we compare ourselves with seven other unit districts for various reasons, based on demographic size, staffing, and so on. Our support staff was actually ranking for starting wages in the seventh or eighth spot among our comparator districts. And this was brought to light a couple of years ago when we did our comparator study and we're going through the job descriptions. So our goal was to try to bring them up to the third spot to make us more market competitive and more in line with our comparators. And we were able to accomplish that with our starting wages, placing our staff based on classification, either first, second, or third across the board. So we have no group that is less than number three now as a result of our agreement with the union. So that was very beneficial. We also no longer have a dual salary structure. There is no more step in lane grid for any employee in this bargaining unit. So everyone is on the same matrix for starting wages and then raises based on CPI or a variation thereof to try to help us keep in line with the costs of inflation and also pace with the revenues that we can generate based on the tax structure here within the community from the state. Chris Welton handled the insurance programs in terms of negotiating rates, shared costs, and contributions for HSA and was able to achieve exactly what we were hoping to as a step in the right direction, hopefully incenting people to move off of our most costly plan and on to more affordable plans without losing coverage or the ability to see their doctors. So we were very happy with this particular agreement and feel that we got much accomplished. That was win-win for both sides.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from board members? Okay, thanks, Jim. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. It's five i's, no nays, two absents. That motion passes. Yeah, yeah. And I'd like to thank everybody involved, both sides, for finishing the negotiation. It's, it's tough work, but we, we have a good, good contract that both sides agreed on. So thank you, both sides.
Okay, so we have another, another bargaining agreement.
So this agreement is with Service Employees of Illinois Union Local 73. These are custodians. And this was ratified by, by their group on September 16. And so we are requesting approval from you at this time, similar to what we just asked with the PSRP group. And if you have a question about this, I will just immediately defer to my left.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and the Service Employees of Illinois Union Local 73.
Okay, second? Okay, moved by Kara, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? I think it's helpful to have another update from Jim. That's very helpful.
So this contract was settled rather expediently. There was very little work to do in terms of language within the contract. Again, looking at both the costs of insurance as well as salary, we were able to maintain a line either with CPI or a variation, minimal variation of CPI for the two-year agreement. Very pleased with that, as well as the differentials and health insurance costs, same as approach with the PSRP. In addition, one of the things that had kind of been lacking was recognition for continuing training, training that would be pre-approved by the district Buildings and Grounds and Operations Department that would allow our people to pursue further education and recognize that, similar to what we do for our PSRP and our teachers. So we were able to develop a system whereby those who wish to continue to pursue and enhance their skill set with purpose of benefiting the district would be able to receive some monetary reward for that continuing effort in service education for the district. That was something new in this agreement, and I think it's something that was, was overdue. We have some very dedicated people that take it upon themselves to do this and felt we needed to recognize that appropriately. So we are one out of our comparator districts. There are only four of us that have in-house custodial service. The rest of the eight, the other four districts actually have outsourced services. So when we take a look at the comparative wages, we are very near the top. And so there was very little room in terms of salary increases, and they were very amenable to working with us on that. So overall, again, I think a win-win situation and great work on the insurance and on the salary, as well as giving back something to them in recognition of their efforts on behalf of service to the district.
Go ahead, thank you. Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. It's five i's, no nays, two absents. That motion passes. And I'd like to thank everyone again, custodians and, and our administrative team for coming to an agreement and helping. I like that, the continuing education part, that, that's great, that each of our bargaining units has that kind of reward. So thank you.
Approval of medical and dental insurance-
Approval of medical and dental insurance contract.
All right. So the rationale for this is based, um, uh, exactly on the presentation you just saw. We were anticipating some rate increases. We were able to, uh, get some rate decreases based on, um, some surprising good news as well as the, uh, uh, adjustments that were made in the PPO 1 plan. As you see on there, the, uh, the cost for the dental coverage remains the same, uh, is flat. And so that, that, uh, again, we recommend that you approve this, and that is based on the information that you just heard from Chris.
Any motion?
That the Board of Education approve the renewal of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health and Dental Insurance Plans and to implement the PPO Plan, alternative renewal for January 1st through December 31st, 2018 school, um, 2018 year as presented.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Margaret, seconded by Kara. Any discussion? Chris, you gave a nice presentation. There's no more discussion. Okay.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Coforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. It's five I's, no N's, two E's, and that motion passes. Employee retirement agreement.
Okay. So Martha Minkema, uh, from Technology Department is retiring, and, um, there was a provision in the previous PSRP contract, um, for some options for employees to get some, uh, extended insurance coverage. And though she technically was not in that group, uh, we wanted to treat her accordingly, and in exchange for that, um, she will be providing some service beyond her retirement to help transition to her new, uh, to the new person and imply, and, uh, provide training, um, that is, uh, the hours that she would work is roughly equivalent of the, the cost of the, um, insurance benefit that she would receive. And, um, uh, that's, that's the, uh, you know, 30,000-foot, uh, uh, part of this, the, the specifics are, are in your packet, you know, that, that Dave Smith put together. I believe it's your letter. Yeah. And so, um, so we would recommend that. She's done a terrific job. She has a lot of historical knowledge, and, uh, we are going to try to, I think, diversify, uh, some things in the district office as we get these retirements so that, uh, we don't have as many situations where, uh, we don't have backup and more people that, that have some of these, uh, knowledge of, of how certain systems and things work. Uh, but in this particular case, uh, she's a very valuable employee, and it would be of great benefit for us to help transition a new person with her support.
Is there a motion? Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the retirement agreement with Martha Mink- Me- as presented.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by Kara. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Martha for helping us, uh, transition. I mean, she's got the wealth of knowledge on Power School. She's been doing it for over, uh, a decade, and, um, we appreciate that she's going to help us transition.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Coforio?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. It's five I's, no N's, two E's, and that motion passes. We have one more action item.
Yes. I just want to, uh, you know, thank the foundation, uh, for all of its support. We, they, they treat us very well. And, um, a couple of months ago, uh, we approached them, or, wow, I don't know if it was a month ago, we approached them about funding this program, and they immediately responded that they would, uh, be willing to help us. Last year, Dave Smith learned of a program by Sprint with all of our Chromebooks and all of our one-to-one. You know, we're redesigning how, um, our instruction looks, and for some of the families who, uh, do not have, um, internet in their homes, uh, we wanted to find a way to help support them, and this, this was one way to do it. But the funding source that we had identified last year, uh, dried up, and so the foundation stepped in and is going to provide these hotspots for families that, uh, do not have internet access. So I think it's a great thing, um, and I certainly am very appreciative.
I move that the Board of Education approve the District 205 Foundation's donation of $3,750 for the purchase of Sprint mobile hotspot devices for students' use as part of the Sprint Connect Ed program.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by Jim.
Yes. As Dave had said, thank you to the District 205 Foundation. Also, thank you to the community who supports the foundation. Um, this is one item where I know that we, as a district and a community, have, um, have helped all of our students, helped out different schools. Here's one example of how the district is looking at equity, um, of education for all of our students. So with that, um, a little bit about it is that the, this, um, Connect Ed is from the U.S. Department of Education that got started in 2013 when they said they wanted broadband access throughout the nation, uh, for students. So they put this program together, and thank you, Dave Smith, and your team, um, for tapping into it for us. And I know that in the past, we've gotten Title I funding to support it, and because that was not coming, this, this, uh, for the, for the students this year, um, the foundation stepped up. So it, this is, this is an example of what we're trying to do is provide the equity across all of our students throughout the district, and we look at different ways that we can, first off, bring it to the district, and then, secondly, maintain it.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Coforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. It's five I's, no N's, two E's, and that motion carries. Superintendent's communication.
So I'm gonna turn this back to Chris, and, uh, uh, every year in October, we give you the enrollment projections. We update the enrollment projections after we, uh, complete our September 30 enrollment report.
We did the enrollment projections based on the September 30th, as Dave just said. First off, just comparing, um, last year, last school year, the 16, 17 year, to the current year, 17, 18, which, uh, so September 30th of 17. Um, we have an overall, across all our schools, an increase of 94 students to 8,530, or 1.11% increase. Madison is up by nine students to 297, uh, students. K-5, we are up 19 students, uh, 0.55% increase. And the middle schools were up seven students, and at York, we are up, uh, oh, I'm sorry, at the middle schools, we were down seven students. At York, we're up 73 students. But, uh, the, we use the modify, or the, the cohort survival method. So these are internal projections that we do just based on historical, um, sto- historical cohorts. But, um, for kindergarten, we were using the demographer's, um, kindergarten numbers, um, because he took into consideration birth rate and census information about, um, the, the, um, demographics of the, um, residents in, in particular areas, except that, um, I had trouble using his numbers for Jackson and Field just because they were, they've been off, uh, by so much. And I'll talk a little more about that for the, that is for the kindergarten numbers. But we, the, um, the hardest thing for projections is to, is to project the low grades, the early childhood and the kindergarten numbers. Um, we, so we don't, we don't project early childhood because it's just too difficult because we're talking about three and four-year-olds, and also it's, um, at-risk students. So figuring that out is just, uh, too difficult to, to project. The demographer didn't do it, um, when he was here either for the same reason. He, he kinda used the rationale of, um, you know, the definition of at-risk can, can be, can be, uh, a little bit gray or change with different people. But, so we just, uh, but if you look at Madison and early childhood, we were at 223 students back in 2012, 13. It's grown each year to the current level of 297. So, uh, Madison has definitely been trending up, but we just projected it flat, even though it, it has been growing, um, over the past several years. So, from, at the, at the K-5 level, um, I'll just talk a little bit about, like, we hired the demographer at, um, I was concerned about Emerson and Fisher, and the schools on the north side were, were experiencing some big growth, um, when we hired the demographer, and those schools have, have really decreased. Fisher's down about 30 students, and Emerson is down 118 students over the past five years. So, um, so the, the north side has, has really, um, decreased at the elementary level. Field, Field is, is much lower than what the demographer had said. At the time, the demographer was here, I know that I heard a lot about how Field was gonna grow way more than what he said, and actually, it hasn't come, come in, it's, it's actually the other way. It, it's much lower than what the demographer had said. But it, but talking about that a little bit, um, like Jackson, for instance, Jackson, if you looked, can you go down to Jackson, uh, just a little bit, couple slides? Jackson, the demographer had Jackson's kindergarten, he was projecting at, um, 50, 51, 49, 49, 49. And then we had three years there of kindergarten, 69, 67, 73. So that, that had concerned me, that Jackson was getting these large kindergarten classes when he was projecting him at 49. And then this year, it came in at 49, which, uh, so now I don't know what to do. But, uh, as far as the projections, uh, so I, I went with middle ground of 55, 55, 55, 54, 53, and that's just kind of a random thing. Uh, I don't know where it'll actually, uh, come out. But the, the lower grades are so hard to project. And then, um, Dave, can you go back up to Field? Oh, no. It's on the top. Yeah. Field, Field, he was, the demographer had projected Field had 76, 76, 75, 74, 74 for the kindergartens, and they've been 61, 49, 60, 59, 61. So the, the kindergartens really hasn't been nearly as high as what he was projecting, mid-70s. And so I lowered it to the 62, 63. But we do have that, um, that new area, so I did have them increasing, um, as it, as it goes out. But if you, but the middle schools, um, we've kinda have, we've been talking about this bubble where we had, we have large classes in grades eight, nine, 10, and 12. Um, so they've, they've kinda worked through the middle schools already, other than the eighth grade class, of these large, larger classes or cohorts, um, coming through. So the middle school peaked in, um, in last year, 1,970 middle school students. This year, 1,0963, and we're projecting that to, uh, to continue to decrease as, at the middle schools as these, these bigger classes move up to York. So we're expecting York to grow over the next two years, um, and that'll be the peak there in 1920 at York. And then, then it will start to decrease a little bit after that. Uh, but, but at the middle schools, if you go down a little bit, Dave, to the middle schools. Uh, Bryan, Bryan is projected, well, it already is our largest of our three middle schools, um, but going down a little bit the next two years, uh, five students next year, and then six students the year after going down, but then growing after that. Where Churchville, Churchville, um, has been growing, but now is gonna go down, uh, the next three years with, uh, some, some decreases. Where it's at 559, going down to 457 in three years there at Churchville. And that's, that's largely because Emerson is down 118, or, um, and, um, and Fisher has been down, so the Churchville, um, elementaries are down. Where, where Bryan, you know, where we've experienced growth at Jackson and at Jefferson. So that's why, uh, Bryan is projected to increase. And then Sandberg, um, Hawthorne is down 100 students, and so, um, that's why Sandberg, um, Sandberg is projected to decrease as well. So, so for, overall, for, for next year, um, next year, overall, is, is an increase of 30, 32 students, uh, but down 63 at the middle schools. So that's really yet, in a nutshell.
Chris, is York equipped for 2,900 kids? Do they have enough lockers? Do they have enough storage space?
Lockers, we did, we added, we added a lot of lockers, uh, because we, we had expected, can you go down to York, Dave? We, we, uh, had a large freshman class, um, last year, and we, we put in a bunch of lockers then, but I, I do think, uh, we'll have to check into, uh, so next year, 36 more kids, and then 59. We'll probably have to get some more lockers, I would think, um, over there at York. But I think, I think Frank's got an idea or Jerry where, where to put the lockers. Might get a little tighter there, but, uh, that's expected to be the peak there in 1920.
All right. And then my other question, um, you know, I know a couple of years ago, we had quite a bit of concern about, uh, the development site near the old Elmhurst Hospital. If you stake that out, have you done a stroller count around there?
No, I haven't. I remember at the time, there were 56 houses. The demographer had projected one, one per house of 56, uh, and, uh, that hasn't happened yet, uh, so, uh, we'll, we'll have to monitor that situation, but we haven't experienced the 56 that he had projected at the time. We'll see, um, if that is still to come.
That's what I'm curious about, is do we have any read on, um, the makeup of families that have moved into that development? Is there a traffic jam due to all these strollers and kids that are gonna be coming into kindergarten? Or did families with multiple children and multiple grade levels move in? We have any idea? Is there a way to get an idea?
I don't. I don't know if the city has information on that, but I don't, uh. Uh, I, I'll have to investigate that a little further. I, I don't have any information.
I'd, I'd hate for there to be, you know, all of a sudden, a, I mean, as you say, kindergarten is the most difficult grade to predict, to, uh, find out that, you know, well, over two years, we've got, you know, kindergarten increases of 25 or 30 kids at, uh, coming into Fields and have it blindside us.
Yeah. That's a good point. I'll, I'll, um, see what we can find out about that. At the time, I remember the demographer saying, you know, these were very large, very expensive households, and they might have older children, or they might be in private schools, or whatever. That's where he came up with one. And so far, we haven't, you know, knock on wood, it hasn't happened yet, but we, we will investigate that further.
Is, is Carolina's accent was, Chairman?
I remember.
Yeah. So thank you, Chris, for, um, looking into it, because that was
Yeah.
my questions, too. And so the only other school that I'm thinking of, um, is Bryan. It's a peak that we've never had before.
Yeah.
So do we feel as though that building and facility is going to accommodate all of our students?
Well, with any enrollment projection, it's not a science. It's, you know, uh, and the further you go out, the less reliable it is. So, um, and we'll do this every year, and, uh, the concern, when I looked at Bryan, is still, is still four to five years out. So, um, I don't want to, um, um, get too nervous yet about capacity at Bryan, but I definitely plan to monitor it every- So we'll, we'll wait and see, and then monitor it.
Because the, the only thing that I was thinking is, is there any way to shift? I know that some students at Jefferson go to Bryan, some go to Sandberg, and if we've got Sandberg that's decreasing and Bryan increasing, is that an option? And all of those sorts of things start coming into play.
Yeah, I think, Amy, do you remember that, that information about the Jefferson students?
Only 6% is below.
Went to
To Bryan.
To Bryan. Yeah, most of the Jefferson students were going to Sandberg.
What is the capacity at Madison? I think your enrollment's at 297?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but we'll see if we can find that out.
That's, that's a complicated question because of the nature of that program. I, I think they are pretty close to capacity, but a lot of, a lot of, one of the main factors of how many kids we take is the funding to support it. So, you know, sometimes we do take a few more kids if they're identified, but she has to program with the support services and the class sizes and, and the needs of the children. It's, it's a lot different to give an answer to that than it is at, at any of the other class, any of the other schools and programs. But I, I've gone through that school. I don't really think they have any extra classrooms. I think they, they might be able to take a few more students, but I don't think too many more, be my opinion on that.
All right, thanks, Chris. We have October leadership team meeting.
Okay, so I'd like to give you updates on these, and this last one occurred last Thursday. We are working with a book on innovation from, from a professor from Harvard University. I talked with this a while ago. He Skyped into our August principal meeting, and we delved into chapter two of his book, Lead and Disrupt, and that chapter's called Explore and Exploit. And the idea being that in order to innovate, you have to simultaneously have a continuous improvement strand and an innovation strand going in your organization. And so we're kind of referring to that instructionally as best and next practices. And so we had an activity where our people facilitated some work based on the actual content of the chapter, and then I tried to take some of those big ideas and put them into the context of our operational plan, our student achievement priorities, and some of the work we're doing with culture and change leadership, to try to get them, to get a little bit deeper grasp of how they can use these ideas in their work with their school improvement plans, and how we can take a look at what do we mean by continuous improvement and where are areas that we can innovate. And so that was kind of the, those were some of the big ideas from, from last week's leadership team meeting. I think it went, I think it went pretty well, actually.
Okay. All right, thanks. Moving on to Freedom of Information Act requests.
Okay, let me pull that up real quick here. For this time, two requesting specific medical information which were denied, one requesting staff member information which was granted, one requesting specific finance information which was granted.
Okay, we're moving along to board communications. Cara?
All right, so the Policy Committee met on October 12th, and all of the board members were present, Mr. McDonough, Dr. Harrell, and myself on the committee. We had three topics to discuss. The press update, which was the policy updates that are sent by the Illinois Association of School Board, and so, based on new legislations that are passed. So those updates will be, will be on the November 14th agenda for the full board to have their first reading. We discussed the review of Policy 880, which is Gifts to the District. Due to concerns that have been brought up at previous board meetings, we felt that it should be on the committee agenda. And so we discussed, and at this time, the committee does not feel that there should be any changes to the policy. We also discussed Policy 760, which is residency, student residency, and a question had been raised by a committee or a community member, and so we discussed that policy as well, and it will stand as written. The next policy meeting is November 9th at 6 o'clock in this building. Any questions?
Work that was going to be done internally from the administration, looking at donations or procedures? I missed the meeting.
I'm going to turn that over to Jim.
Yes, we are looking at our administrative procedures, but we also want to be very cautious that any procedural change that we might look for or to redraft or rewrite would not tie the hands of the district in terms of if someone gives a gift to a particular school, does that gift then warrant that the district, in light of its policy, then, does it become incumbent upon the district to provide that same, I'll call it, gift to the other schools? And we want to be very careful that we do not set the district up for that type of restriction. So we are looking at, and actually, we've discussed this at our cabinet meetings the last two weeks, and are gathering some information from some other districts on procedures, but the policy will stand as is, and we will take a look internally at whether or not our administrative procedures need to be brought in, brought into review and discussion before we would recommend or make any changes to those procedures. But the answer is yes, there are things happening internally.
Anything else from policy? Okay. Now, you mentioned November 9th is the next policy meeting, 6:00 p.m. Okay, these are upcoming meetings. Tuesday, November 14th, we have one Board of Education meeting in November, and that's also a public hearing on driver education waiver of rules. And then Tuesday, December 12th, Board of Education meeting, there'll be one board meeting in December. Okay, we're at the end of the agenda. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you. Yeah?